That is you next to me.
Good evening.
Good, good to see you.
It's saying it's not here.
Somebody's on call.
Yeah, how about you?
With all of your short, all of your short kids?
You know, the one request my nineteen year old had to get pajamas or wear, he's like.
Can you find the agenda for this?
Oh gosh.
It's twelve five.
Oh.
For her boys. Okay. Thanks. All right, it's seven o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. We're gonna call the meeting into order. First item of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Knabel. Ms. Dobson.
Here.
Mr. Earhart.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Rivalo.
Here.
Ms. Dominic.
Here.
Mr. Sly.
Here.
Ms. Squire. Mr. Morse.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Very good, thank you very much. And do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, we would like to move, um, request to move item number four to item number two, please.
Okay. Alrighty. Any other changes?
No.
Alright. Look for approval of the agenda.
Move we approve the agenda with corrections.
Second.
It's been moved in second, started the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero. Alrighty, and do we have any signed up for, anybody signed up for citizen participation?
No.
Okay. And if anybody's here for the, um, public hearing, that will, you'll have an opportunity to speak for that on Agenda Item Number Six, so you will have an opportunity to speak at that point. Alright, moving on to formal commission action, approval of minutes for the December fifth, twenty twenty four meeting.
I'll make a move, motion approve the minutes from December fifth meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Absane.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one for approval of the minutes. Alrighty. Item number two then is gonna be site application SP twenty four dash nine, Spring Hill Industrial Park for Seats Inc.
Good evening, thank you for changing the agenda. Uh, what we have is a seat as an expansion of their existing structure or existing facility out there. Seventy-four thousand square foot expansion, uh, would be expanding to the west of it. They, uh, they're working through the city right now, uh, on all the different proposals as far as the, uh, state financing and the financing of the properties. But the site plan, they want to, uh, go ahead and get all the site plan and we're working on the building plans at the same time. It's, uh, pretty straightforward. It's just like seventy-four thousand square foot expansion, um, that will be serving, I believe, as warehouse is what it appears to be. Um, and of course, all the lot lines have been verified, setbacks, uh, stormwater drainage is being worked on, uh, and the report's already being reviewed by the city engineer. Uh, landscaping requirements, uh, most all the landscaping requirements are already met due to the, it's being expanded onto the west of the, of the existing structure. So, um, traffic, uh, it's gonna increase just two truck trips a day is what the study is coming out to be, so, um, you know, just ship in and out. Right now, it's my understanding, maybe they don't want me to say this, but it's my understanding they're leasing, um, property over to Intermodal, and they would like to move their facility all in one here. I'd be happy to entertain any, um, questions or their engineering reps are here.
So was there anything significant about the drainage? Guess that would be my only question.
No.
So one question I had, it looks like they're, they're planning to essentially add on to the existing building.
I think the existing one's about, excuse me, ninety-nine thousand square feet, so seventy-five thousand is a pretty significant addition.
But they also owned the property to the west of this.
That is correct.
But that property's not included in this.
That is not.
Okay, so there's no plans for it at this time?
Not at this time, a matter of fact, to give you some background on it, years ago, they went and made a deal with Mr. Cummins, and that's where they had looked at putting a whole new facility there. Um, and then, as we know, they purchased the property on the corner as you first turn in onto Lincoln, I, it's on the southwest corner of Lincoln and two hundred and seventh. So that kind of proposed, uh, that kind of set back this, but, um, you are correct, that's why they purchased that property originally, so.
Yeah, I think it's five acres.
It is.
So I was surprised when, when the description was to the west, I, at first I expected to see something on that lot, but.
Yep, so that's good, I mean, it just gives them more room to expand in the future and with the, uh, um, you know, they've been a really good partner with the community, um, and we hope that we're a good partner with them and would like to see more out of seats, you know, in the future.
Will, will this result in any new job growth?
It's my understanding that there will be just a few jobs brought over because it is warehouse. Um, but in conjunction with this, they are improving, um, the existing facility and doing some things to this facility that they would not have typically done or completed, but, uh, with state incentives, we hope that they can get some additional improvements to the existing structure as well as this one that they hadn't planned on doing.
So, so the only incentives that are, I saw incentives were, were referenced in the, in the information.
That's correct.
It's just at a state level at this?
No, it'll be at the city.
Oh, city.
As well.
Okay.
Yes. We, we exist, we have existing RB bonds and things like that with them now. And what we're, I just was on the phone today with bond attorney, and we're looking, the best way to pursue this into, um, well, the, the best way of pursuing it, I shouldn't get in the weeds until I talk to him, I guess, huh? So. But they've been a real good partner with the city. Thank you.
Any discussion?
I do have another question, so it's not where the red dot is.
What are you looking at?
Cause the red dot.
As you can see, just look at your screen, you can see the existing structure and the new structure built there.
Okay.
Uh, what run, you want me to take a look at your red dot?
Yeah, I mean, there's a red dot. I'm like, what is, cause it's actually over here somewhere, isn't it?
It is, the, the red dot should have been down there.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Discussion? Anyone?
I don't have any questions, I, I assume that there is no additional roadway? There's no need to access that addition, it's through the existing building? Uh, yes, but you can see that there is a roadway proposed up to it there. Okay. On both ends, uh, it's existing roadway. Yeah. So they'll still have, uh, access to it through those existing roadways.
Since we're talking about existing roadways, how's Lincoln Street coming?
I believe Lincoln Street is all but completed. If, um, I'd, to be honest with you, with all the changes in the city and all new people and she, you know, I just don't. Yeah. But last time I was down it, it was pretty well completed.
I was gonna say, I haven't heard more discussion about it or conversation about it, so there's, but I'd ask, well, since we're on, since we're on the topic of the street and two more truckloads a day.
And we'll try, um, you know, with the new engineer on board, we should be able to get some, uh, briefings once a month on what projects are coming up and things like that, and then we can, we'll be able to get them to you.
Pat, since you came back up.
Sure.
Um, a lot of times, you know, other buildings in, in the industrial park along the highway, we talked about the Wayne's coating requirements, does this apply?
No, it doesn't.
I didn't think it did.
Yeah.
And is that because it's out of sight?
Out of sight, um, and it's all industrial all the way around it. Um, now, you know, in, in looking at our comp plan and things like that, what we have, are proposing on some of that is if they do, uh, let's say this is in the future with our comp plan, they put this addition on, and there is no Wayne's coating on the front of the existing building, then that would probably be a requirement, and so. But, um, as you know, we do not have that requirement right now.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Anyone like to make a motion?
We have to recommend approval of application SP dash twenty four dash nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve SP dash twenty four dash nine, I'll start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero zero. Alright, moving on to final plat application FP twenty four dash six, Oakwoods Fifth Plat.
Thank you, this is the, uh, final plat of the preliminary plat that, uh, you approved, uh, a couple of months back. It's the R two zoning there, um, up against highway and the final plat of Oakwoods there. Uh, seventy-two, so I'll read a little bit here for you, number lots is seventy-one lots. Um, the plans, the public improvement areas have already been submitted and are being reviewed, although the preliminary review of it came back, there was no problems with any of it. Phelps is designing this also and works close with our engineering, so. But that, it follows exactly to what the planning commission, uh, approved on the preliminary plat. And this is where we looked at the traffic flows and engineering and PD and, um, community development and, um, public works all looked at that. Uh, one of the things that is, I'm out doing inspections here the last few weeks and I've been doing those fourplexes over there, and they're all but completed. I think we have, uh, if I remember today, I think there was five more buildings, so twenty more units, but they're all roughed in, framed in, they're almost at the final. So it's really closing out quickly on that part. And that's a congested area in there, you've, you guys have driven through it. We felt like that that will also eliminate some of these traffic problems. And then they have started on the, I don't know if any of you have seen that, they have started on the subdivision by the Aquatic Center, so. I know it's a brief overview, but everything was spelled out and pretty much hammered out at, at preliminary. We almost just went ahead and did a final review with you guys on it. If you have any questions.
There's no changes from the preliminary?
None at all.
Any other questions for Mr. Burton?
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question for you, Mr. Burton.
Oh, sure.
Is there any more public comment or questions about it?
No, we have, we received.
About it?
No, we have not received any.
Okay.
And I recall that the city was, was monitoring the traffic a little bit too, the existing traffic.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, I was out there, I've been out there, well, I've been doing inspections for a couple of weeks, um, and they're filing out several of those in through there, and, uh, I've not seen any truck traffic. And I'll tell you, really, one of the major points that was really backing up is when you first pull in there, there was five or six houses on that north side that were being constructed, and every day there were concrete trucks or some sort of construction vehicles there, so. Only truck I saw this last week blocking the road was a city truck.
Is that the one you were driving?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Uh, he was putting in water meters.
Okay.
This is in the city's water district as well, so.
That's good, and I, and I think the community understands there's a long-term plan for two hundred and seventeenth Street to connect through there.
Oh, sure.
Natural access. That will help in the long, in the long run.
That's what, what is that called, aquatic drive or something? By the Aquatic Center? Is that Sycamore?
Sycamore.
Also Sycamore. And we have brought that up already, engineering and all, so hopefully we can get that on the CIP.
Yeah, that'd be great, and, and I remember, you know, we talked, we also discussed the idea of a construction entrance, but, you know, the reality is that it's a different developer to the east, and so it'd be really hard to court.
And really, by the time they get all these roads and infrastructure in, I'm not so sure that the, by the Aquatic Center and everything won't be completed by the time they get this going. Cause like I said, I don't know if you've seen it or not, behind Family Dollar and all that, where they're moving all the dirt and everything, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Someone like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the application FP twenty four dash six, final plat of Oakwoods Fifth Plat.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero zero. Alright, moving on to final plat FP twenty four dash seven, Grace Community Church of the Nazarene.
Alright, thank you. So, I'm assuming everybody knows what Grace Church is on the west side of the highway. They, we, they've been working on a site plan and, uh, as well as adding additions onto their building for several months anyway. It needs to be platted, it'll just be a one lot plat, um, so that the, uh, it'll meet all the regulations to be able to continue on with the site plan. Uh, it's eleven acres if I remember correctly, yes, it's eleven acres. Uh, it's currently zoned R one, which churches are allowed in R one district. Engineering as well as community development, already working on the, uh, site plan and have been for a while, trying to put all those pieces together, uh, you know, state approval and, cause it has a highway entrance and uh, it's on septic right now and, um, a whole array of different variables for them on this project. So, I was kinda hoping to bring the site plan around at about the same time, but we're not quite at that point yet. So maybe next meeting, I'm assuming. Uh, so this is a pretty simple one lot final plat subdivision. I will, uh, let me go over a few things that in the report, um, typical language on everything with the, the park fee will be required, and that's issued at the building permit time and then the excise tax. There are no bond requirements on this project as of right now due to no public improvements going in. We'll see what the state comes back with, if turn lanes and things like that, and that, that bonding would probably be controlled by the state anyway, so. But we still will have a development agreement or, I would imagine, some sort of agreement because of excise tax.
So is, is the objective here, I'm looking on the Ames site, it looks like they have a six and a half acre lot where the main church is today, and then a four point six to the south of that, so they're combining those two lots?
They have to do, to be able to utilize that, and if you look at, the one lot is to the west of the other.
Or to the south?
To the south, I'm sorry, to the south. To, so to be able to utilize all, all that and have it under one site plan, they do have to have it all combined. And your best method of that is obviously, um, plating. Now this plat, it's, it'll go to council, but we're, we're probably going to wait just a little bit on it, uh, to record it. So we may be in the recording process with it, with building permit. The reason is, is additional easements, or I'm not sure what the state's gonna require. And if the state's gonna require more right away, it is easier to just draw it than to try and, um, meet and balance it, or describe it out. So. Just so you know, that's where we'll be at it. So when the permit's issued, you may look on Ames and it still isn't one, but, um, that's, it could be that process, we could take that road on that process. The city records the plats, so we, you know, it used to be developers and all record the plats, but the city does now, so.
Is there any potential for them to tap into city sewer?
No, there is no city sewer in that area.
You'd have to come under the highway.
Uh, and we wouldn't be able to, we looked at that way back some time ago, uh, and the Wiswell Lift Station, unfortunately, the depth is not as needed. And we could put a new well beside it and all that, but you're talking millions and millions of dollars. Eventually, there will be sewer over there.
So, help me, it says the city will provide sanitary sewers?
No, what we'll do is provide the inspection services for the, uh, septic. I know what it says.
Okay, so that's fine.
Right, we, and we, we tried, we tried to work on to get to Wiswell, but it's now said that the depth of Wiswell Lift Station, which is on the east side of the highway, is not deep enough to serve this one, so.
Do you think, is there existing septic system sufficient, or?
It, it'll all be reviewed and the county is gonna assist us on that.
And it says there's no water available, by water line? Is this just a wrong sentence in here?
Uh.
It says the city will provide sanitary sewers, there is no water available by water line?
Well, um, what they're talking about, there's water there, but there's not enough, uh, I mean, you'd have to extend the line down through there.
Okay.
Um, there is water there at their property, so, just the sanitary is incorrect. And now, now it's incorrect, it was, we were trying to get it to go. So I should have taken that sentence out before I got to you guys, sorry about that. Cause I'm sure they'd like to be on, you know, sanitary, our service instead of having septic, you know? Cause eventually, it may make this work, but I don't know if there would be, you know, it takes a pretty big field for a commercial, and that's,
Yeah.
you know, one of the churches is a commercial.
They still have nine and a half acres to the north they can use.
Yeah. You know what, my luck would be, I'd dig in there and be all rock.
Mine too.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I guess I do have one more question, and part of that is, are they anticipating a lot of growth? Because then that would, um, is that when the, the roadway would become a concern is, is if there's a lot more traffic in there? Or is this just?
Well, the state, right, so they're, they've submitted a traffic study to the state.
Okay.
And the state has preliminarily came back and said, well, we're gonna review the traffic study.
Okay.
As you have submitted it, it would not require large turn lanes and things like that. Um, but it's still in review, and I, I'm assuming that they are. going to have some additional growth and then in the future as well. Um, but the traffic study that was submitted right now does not show a doubling of congregation.
I just know that, I mean, I used to go, um, we haven't attended church for a while, but that was our church, and whenever we had to turn left to get in, I mean, it was quite
Yes.
a Frogger competition, and I imagine with all of the traffic that um, has grown since then, um, that is probably even more difficult, and so I just wonder.
And that's, I, well, that's a good thing about being a state highway.
Okay.
I mean, the State Department, they, they really are looking at it real close. David Sites uh, gave us the initial review back, um, and he said they're gonna really look at it. They would love to close that middle out. Um, you know, so maybe something they're looking at now, in conjunction with um, a quick update, we are working, apparently we are all but approved for signalization at a hundred and ninety first street. So we'll have to see what that comes out, it may be that that would be the way the state would be able to remove that center area there, which is the most dangerous part of it. You know, you understand, yeah.
Any other questions? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final platification FP twenty-four dash seven, Grace Community Church as presented by staff.
Um, just to be clear, that includes the correction on that sentence, correct? Well, but I, I'm just making sure that we're clear on what we're approving here.
It's two sentences.
Okay. Was that what your motion was?
Yes, with the corrections, as presented by staff, just to clarify.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Start the voting on the left.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero zero. Moving on, site application SP twenty-four dash ten, Hidden Hills Pool and Clubhouse.
Okay, thank you, this uh, used to be Woodland Crossing South, if I remember correctly, was not the name of it. Uh, and it's always shown on the preliminary plat, this area is um, for the amenity package. And now the construction has started in there, it has been going for a little while, but um, is continuing to grow and grow, and so this is the amenity package site plan. Um, it's about fourteen, huh, thirteen thirty-nine square foot clubhouse sitting on a half acre. Uh, of course, the, they'll take all the um, precautions with the pool and fencing and all. The county, they will have, they will be under the new county guidelines for uh, private pools. Where, you know, there's, there's a whole array of new protection measures that the county has uh, adopted through international codes. As far as everything else here, the, the sewer is already there on that lot, right there at the lot. So it was already prepared, there'll be nineteen parking stalls, yes, with one ADA stall. Um, engineering, the stormwater is already accounted for, and the uh, subdivision fencing is shown on there, uh, and number nine, I've already spoke about on the health department. So the, you can see the landscape plan meets all, you can see the um, elevations of it, it's a nice, different looking building than all the other structures, you know, typical uh, pool house area. So I think it's, I think it'll be a real good addition for that neighborhood, and it will be maintained by the Homes Association.
May I ask a question?
Oh, of course.
Okay, so going, um, I'm trying to figure out which entrance is this?
That's an entrance off of Woodland. And I don't know what that crossroad is, is, is it the first main entrance off of Woodland that goes in there?
Okay, so it's the one that's directly across from Woodland Ridge Pool?
It's dark Barker Street.
Okay.
So that's.
That's Woodland Ridge, yeah.
Okay, I didn't.
The pool is on that same.
Oh, okay. The, this really did, um, this subdivision helped that area, a lot of things that that uh, well, planning commission, general public and all, probably most of staff doesn't understand or know. But by putting this in, they sewered a lot of different properties there. So the property that's right on the corner that's owned by Lynn Baker, where they tore down the old house, you know, that was a non-sewered property before, even though Brookwood Farms backed up to it, there wasn't enough depth. So now with this subdivision in, it was able to serve that property as well. Then if you go to the properties to the south and some of them to the north, it, they could be served by sewer. So if one of the houses to the south came up with a, a septic problem and all, I think the first couple in that we could serve fairly easy with gravity, so. So a lot of things that the general public doesn't understand, or s- some stuff that is not really shared very well with you guys. So it did improve that area. Matter of fact, Mr. Baker's already tied into it.
Well, it's good to see, cause I just live in, in Woodland Ridge annoying, um, what a hot topic this was, it's nice to know that they have a pool.
Yes.
Cause I know that that was a concern.
Yeah.
So, that's great.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Move to recommend approval of site plan application SP dash twenty-four dash ten for the pool of Hidden Hills subdivision clubhouse.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? I thought there was much discussion before.
Looks nice.
Okay, start the voting on the left then?
Aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero zero. All right, moving on to the public hearing, application zoning use CU dash twenty-four dash two for the assisted living facility. And so we'll open the public hearing. So does anybody have any ex-party contacts that they need to um, reveal regarding this case, indicating the nature of the communication who it was with? All right, any commission members describe if any conflicts of interest they may have and dismiss themselves from the hearing?
Nope.
Okay, I, I do need to reveal that I have no financial conflict of interest, but I have an emotional um, interest in this, and this was my father's old house.
Oh, wow.
And so um, I, very well, I lived there for a while, twenty some years ago. And um, have spent many, many days in there, so I um, do wanna reveal that, so I will um, abstain from voting on this, but I feel like I can objectively run the public hearing and um, run it and do that, so I did wanna reveal that. All right, staff reports.
Thank you. So we have a conditional use permit for um, a facility that will be used to house people of, that need some assistance in, in living their everyday lives. Um, it's my understanding that all or most of the people are very mobile still and all. It's just more of a con- congressional home where uh, they're not living alone. They are able to communicate and participate with other people, as well as have some care provided to them by nurses that come through and make sure that they're, you know, maybe taking their medicine and eating correctly and things like that. So the use is um, also governed by the state. The state has to give approval on these, um, and then it'll be monitored by the state. They've submitted this, uh, they do have a, a pending approval with the state and all for this area for this home, so. Um, it is an R one zoning, it's forty-four, uh, it's forty-four tenths of an acre. Uh, one lot, as you can see, they have, this home has an existing uh, U-shaped driveway, which is very nice and handy, so that um, for the maybe drop-off pickup buses, I don't know, whatever, but usually, and even emergency services on this. I did visit a couple of these in Olathe, um, last month. I called the city, they gave me the addresses, I went up, knocked on the door. All of them that I looked at was very nice, they're in older neighborhoods, just like this. Um, they, uh, most of them had eight to ten people in them, it was all about the same square footage. Uh, when I, every one of them I went to had a nurse there, uh, so that was nice, you know. It was a hundred and five degrees in them though, so, and they, most all of them had blankets on still, so. Anyway, back to this, with the golden factors, the surrounding neighborhood is residential, it's shown on the aerial. Uh, the site is already a residential, it's just gonna be a residential type use with uh, congressional uh, type of people in there, a congre- congressional. Uh, Jason Parstals are all zoned the same, R one, uh, is suitability. The current zoning allows that with a conditional use, CUP, that's why we're here tonight. Um, the length of time it's been zoned for ever, I don't know exactly when. The hardship by the landowner, I, I, I just speak for him a little bit, they did purchase the property to, for this use. They were surprised, uh, when I spoke with them, that we required a conditional use. I did check with most all other communities in the area, and they have changed from that where they do not require conditional use on these type of uses anymore, or this type of use uh, as long as it's in residential. Um, and you know, they make sure that public safety and everybody's notified and that they meet all the state guidelines. So uh, that I can tell you that they did have to go into a little more work uh, for our community. Con- the comprehensive plan, of course, shows R one, and this would be an R one use. The good thing about, or the bad, depending on how you look at it, but a good thing that we look at, is a good thing, is that there's an annual review by staff. We um, we take it serious also on uh, you know, making sure that the facilities are correctly maintained and things like that. Most of ours is outside, loo- looking at the outside. We um, are code enforcement right now, they're really working on several places that are similar to this, but in a bigger fashion, uh, on getting some corrections made on those areas. So the good thing is, we will look at it, we'll take a look at it every um, every year. So.
Now Pat, are you saying that most of the other cities around here do not require a conditional use permit?
No.
Spring Hill does.
Right, and.
This kind of.
Right, the owners of this brought it to my attention, or maybe it was another gentleman that brought it to my attention. Uh, cause we've had several uh, inquiries about this in the community. As houses come up for sale and things like that. So I did, I contacted Olathe and they dropped all that, um, because the state handles it. I still think it's a good thing, uh, that way, it, it forces community development to take a look at these properties, okay? Um, without this, I mean, guys were busy, uh, every month Amy sends a list out to the inspectors or inspector, taking a look at all these. Um, Brandon has, and will, but Brandon mostly has done a really good job on uh, making sure trees meet the requirements, or landscaping, let me say. Uh, there's some of them that he's working on that, you know, they're gonna have to fix their sidewalks and all. So it, in our opinion, it's, it's really not that difficult uh, for the, to look at the conditional use and go, but to answer your question directly, that is correct, that most of them have gotten rid of it. I don't know if it's just cause of staff or time or what.
And one more, it, it is licensed by the state currently, or will be?
Yes, they are, uh.
Yes, yes, so we were, we were like in the process of getting approval and license uh, from Kansas. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jasmine, um, I work as a nurse practitioner, so my partner, Elil. And we have a administrator who is already, um, um, she went through the regulations and exams and stuff, she for, to be administrator for the facility, it is going to be a homeless facility. Our plan is to have like four to six residents, uh, not too crowded, with too many residents, um.
What did, what did your state license allow you to add, ten?
Um, yes, they would allow us to have up to twelve, yes, uh-huh. But um, our goal is to have um, four to six maximum. And then, yes, our, our, we were like in the process of getting it approved through Kansas, um, state, but, yeah. We alter, we actually had inspection scheduled uh, by them, like in November. And then we had to put it on hold until we get approval from city.
May I ask another question? Is, um, you're saying assisted living, are they um, competent enough to drive? Do they have their own cars? I mean, what will the impact on the community be as far as that?
So we do the initial assessment when they, uh, when they come to our facility, so that would be like assessed based on um, what their abilities are, some people do have like minimal disability, uh, like very minimal, so um, it really depends on what they're capable of, but if they want to drive, and if they want to have their own car, um, sometimes we would have to allow that, like if the family and the patient wants to really do it.
I can, I can tell you that, and I didn't mention it, but I did ask about that, and uh, there was only one facility in Olathe that there was one older gentleman that had a pickup truck there. Um, nobody else drove, and uh, I know that one, two of them that were owned by one company, uh, they did have a van that took them to different activities, so.
Our plan is to hire, um, like a transportation company, um, to help them with their appointments, um, doctor's appointment or all the other appointments if they want to go. Thank you.
A, a quick question. Um, Mr. Burton mentioned that most of the ones he visited had a nurse, nurse there on site. Would this site have a nurse there like daily, or how does that work?
So we are, uh, our plan is to have like twenty-four hour nursing service there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it doesn't have to be a RN, um, it could be a CNA, um, who can make sure patients are taking bath and stuff. And then taking, remind them to take their medications, or if they are not taking their medication to um, help them with their medications and stuff, we won't be able to do, um, a very extensive like procedures and stuff in there, like you know, suturing, or we may hire like, um, home health nurses to come and do procedures and stuff, but if the CNAs are certified, they can do cer- certain procedures, but the, our goal is to have a, a twenty-four hour service, nursing supervision there.
And, and is there any off, off-street parking available if there was a resident that wanted to have their own vehicle?
It would be right there, the double wide uh or four, you see the four boxes that we put in there?
Yeah.
At the top of the first coming in. That suits four vehicles right there. Um so that would be uh parking if they do have, and that's why I said, this is existing with the. Um horseshoe type driveway, very good facility for something like this, it never. Never really blocks it all in at one time.
And I presume the state will be, when they do their review, that we go through all the ADA code studies, making sure everything's ADA compliant. Handrails, if there's a deck out there, if there's handrails um and so forth, so.
And we will still look at the facility due to, we will accompany the fire department. Uh now, I I haven't really gotten into with the fire department yet um. But all the other facilities that I've visited had a true fire alarm system.
Okay, I know that's not necessarily our job here, but I presume the ADA compatibility will be reviewed by the state.
And we will, though, we can, we still can do some of that.
Yeah.
But yes, I would imagine. The state as well.
So my wife owned a group home in Leewood and was required to put in uh sprinklers actually into this home. But I don't think that we have that requirement.
No, and uh the, none of those facilities that I've visited. Um and that required sprinkler system, but it did require. A monitoring system that went to a third party. And in conjunction with that, it was also a life safety system, so. Uh my assumption is, and and getting, in talking to Dennis with the 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 fire marshal, I'm sorry, talking with the fire marshal. Um those will probably be the same type of requirements here.
You probably didn't uh receive word of a lot of noise complaints from the other locations, I imagine.
No, I did, matter of fact, I pulled up to one of them to be real honest with you and I thought, oh, uh. It sure looks like just, you know, somebody uh and I went up there and knocked and sure enough, I mean, the nurse came and. Let me in and it was, they were very nice about it, uh I had permission, I had a written letter from the company that owned two of them and then. But no, I was, it looked like a regular house, just and I was a little nervous the very first one, so.
Another question that probably doesn't have to do with this, but just um curious, is it coed? Males and females, or just ones?
Yeah, males and females, so we do have four bedrooms, so we are um, we need to work into like to see how we can. Um place our residents, like maybe we can give like one bedroom. So if you're going to have like four residents, they will have their individual rooms, but if you're going to have two residents in one room. Um then it has to be like a male, two males or two females, that's what the plan is, yeah.
Or could it be a married couple?
There was a married, yeah, there was a married couple at one of them that I went to.
I don't know, the reason I ask is.
What their rules are.
Is my, my grandparents were in an assisted living like this in Ottawa. So, so I'm familiar with the with the constitution.
Yeah, yeah, it could be a married couple, we, I did talk to a few um homeless re- uh owners and they said it's better to not have like. Brothers together or sisters together in the same room, but I think for married couples it should be, yeah.
Okay, so do you have any presentation that you would like to make to us, or just you just come up to answer questions, I know, but. We kind of got a little ahead of ourselves in the.
No, that's totally fine, um because I I think we pretty much covered everything, so I work in a nursing, I used to work in nursing homes and. Um she also works in nursing homes, so we kind of come across like um a lot of things that can be changed a little bit like. Um getting a lot of sunlight to people like everyday in everyday life, like basically from sunlight to good nutrition. And you know, treating them as a p- as a person, but not as a room number. So there are like a lot of things we just want to uh put into and improve, so that's the main goal for us to. We were just at like a um dinner table one time and then we were just talking and how. Like things can be improved and then we said, okay, let's start, so that's how it started, yeah.
Do you do you anticipate having to make um many alterations to the homes?
So not ma- not major alteration, we still have to do likes um sidebars and safety uh bars for them, like in the bathtub and stuff. Um I did have like one um remodeling agent come in to just do a checkup, who does like homeless and stuff, he said. One of the bathtubs may need to um adjust it a little bit, but not any major construction work.
And then staff parking will be in those areas as well?
Yes, uh huh, we do have like um garage space too, so they can park in the garage, yeah, mm-hmm, two, two cars can be parked there. And then there's a driveway and then also this circle.
And do you have the questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, I'll open it up for public comments. Anybody in the public have any comments or questions that they'd like, please come up and state your name.
All right, good evening, Thomas Robinson, five oh one South Jefferson, I live uh. On the northwest corner, if you're looking facing the front door of four one four, I'm the blue house, cutting corner, so. So my wife and here to respectfully protest against the approval of the conditional use permit on South Jefferson Street. Um citing no less than three significant reasons, probably more to come. For the number one thing is uh safety, you know, having a single family home zoned as a business, which this is residential, but it is going to be a business. Let's just be honest, um the increased volumes of traffic and transportation from visits, emergency vehicles create significant risk. Of increased risk to pedestrians, I myself, working as a traffic engineering firm, can attest to these and give empirical evidence. Based on studies in multiple states, so significant risk of traffic increase to the pedestrians, especially children. I count no more or less than two households immediately adjacent to this residence that have no fewer than two children apiece. And they play every day in the front yard adjacent to this property, so. Uh secondly, decrease in property values, as we know, the COVID nineteen pandemic has significantly impacted. Uh especially the lower income communities, which if we're basing it on income in the jurisdiction of Spring Hill, our neighborhood itself is one of the lower incomes. And without a lot of us support, a lot of money and equity into rebuilding our houses that are older than nineteen eighty on average. And so, you know, rezoning this and making it uh is going to depreciate our residences and. Um you know, I didn't hear a single comment made about what the impact would be for the people that live in the surrounding community with this residence. To be rezoned, um and so my concerns is that at five oh five South Jefferson, two oh eight South Street. Four one three Jefferson, four oh nine South Jefferson, at my property, five oh one, like I said. We've all spent thousands, up to tens of thousands of dollars to improve our properties in the last four years and. I just think it would be inappropriate to uh have that impacted based on this living facility. We're not impassionate people, we we do care about our community neighborhood, but we are one of the oldest neighborhoods in the community and um. We've really done a great job on South Jefferson revitalizing that sec- section of our street and the property values have all gone up. And that I can demonstrate that, but I don't want to take up all the time of the other folks that want to say something. And third, and finally, is I questioned the validity of the original intent of the property owners. And I'm directing these questions toward the council, it's not gonna be anything personal said, but. Through my own research, I looked up that the property has been listed for the last six months at twenty six hundred dollars per month for rent. And has not been filled, and now we get a notice hearing just a few weeks ago about wanting to rezone it. So I dug a little bit further into the names enlisted on the property and I saw a record of a LPN. And a real estate agent under the same name, so. That's just my concerns and that's all I have to say on this is that I believe I've read the statutes. And for us to petition this, we have to have, I think, up to twenty percent of signing petitions of the notify, notify. Those who are notified, and I asked that question is that, what is my next procedure to issue over in protest? Is that in paper to the city clerk or?
So if it is approved, then you'll, there's a fourteen day contesting period that you would have the time to get your signatures together.
Okay.
To take to the city council.
Great, well, with all due respect, that's all I had and that's voicing my concern, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other public comment? Please come up.
I'm Amanda Duru, I live at two oh six West South Street, I was not notified of this. Um facility wanting to go in and my backyard backs up to this facility, so I feel like I should have been given that opportunity. Um I am here because of other neighbors letting me know that this is coming in. I too have a young child that plays outside, my concern is safety. Um the also, my main concern is how well the facility is going to be kept up. Um like the gentleman before me said, we do take pride in keeping our area clean, safe for our children. Um and resale value of our homes, we are working very hard to bring up this older part of town. And bringing a facility in may affect that. And for us to try to resell, someone may not want to live near a facility. That can po- cause potential emergency vehicles constantly, um unknown foot traffic. Um there has been some theft in the area and we are worried that unknown people will. Maybe we're gonna get broken into again, hopefully not, but there's a lot of strangers coming in. My biggest thing is my kid and the other children in the neighborhood are going to be exposed to other strangers. That we already have to worry about the safety of our kids in the town anyway.
Thank you very much. Any word?
My name's Glessner Jack Wagner the second, I live at four oh one South Jefferson Street. I was not notified, I just found about this today and I'm here to oppose it. I do not want a business on my street, I don't want a multi-home family on my street. I don't want emergency vehicles coming up and down my street when they're needed for assistance on there. Be quite upfront and honest with you, I got more days in my rearview mirror than I have in my windshield. I do not want to be walking out of my house to go to work and coming home from work, being reminded of death every day. Seeing it across the street from my house, I don't think that this is a appropriate for a residential neighborhood that's been there for quite some time. As mentioned earlier, everybody, including myself, has spent tens of thousands of dollars to improve our homes. I'm out all the time trying to keep it clean, I'm out there picking up all this pea gravel from the street, from doing the recap all the time. Which I feel it's not safe for anybody that needs assistance to be going up and down our streets. I don't really think it's even safe for a kid to be riding our bike up and down our streets when I'm picking that stuff up every day. When they talk about parking, there is no ample parking, they have two car garage that they can park in it to. They marked off four spots on that map where there's ample parking, if they park a car in all four of those spots, they've just eliminated. The point that they brought about at the Circle Drive for emergency vehicles to come in there at all hours of the day. I'm sorry, I'm nervous and I'm shaky, but I am very opposed to this, I I have very little confidence in who is doing this. You know, I heard that they bought this home with the initiations, you know, the intentions of doing this as a business. But yet I'm also finding out that they've been trying to rent it out as a residence for six months, so which is the actual truth? Then I was not notified and I live on the same block, I don't feel that they did an honest attempt to try to notify the public. The notification that I did read was in Miami County, I live in Johnson County, the address of this home is in Johnson County. Johnson County residents should have been notified, not Miami County residents, I do not read Miami County news. Because I do not live in Miami County, I do not go south of Spring Hill for work or for. Activities on a daily basis, why should I go out of my way to find out about changes that are happening on my street? That affect me and my family, I don't want my grandkids to. I don't want to have to explain to them why there's ambulances coming down my block and there's bodies being carried in or out of that place at times. That's a conversation that I should be able to choose when to have with my children and my grandchildren. I don't think it's appropriate for our neighborhood to have a nursing facility, an assisted facility. Or if you want to call it a multi-family residence in our home, in our neighborhood. And I think it was very devious of them to put the notification in a different county than what the place was gonna be located at. And if I had not overheard and been told about this today, this afternoon, to take off of work to come in here. Then I'm afraid that it might have been been passed without my say. Now, I've contacted a few other people that live in this neighborhood, that own property on this neighborhood, and they didn't know about it and they could not be here today. So they're not able to say their side of it either. But I don't think that this is appropriate for our neighborhood, I don't feel that the company that purchased this is being honest with us. When they first say that they bought this resident with intentions of doing this, but tried to rent it out for the six months. And now they're trying to turn it into a business, I do not want a business on my street. If I wanted to live in a business area, I would live in a business area. If I wanted to live with an apartment across the street from my house or a multi-family e- resident across from my house, I would have looked in those areas. If I want to sell my house, I think it's gonna be harder for me to sell it, knowing that there's a nursing home on the same block as my residence. So yes, I do feel it's gonna affect the value of my home and my neighbors' homes, I think it'll make, it will really affect curb appeal of my home. Which I take pride in, I spend, I spend just as much time. On the outside of my home and the yard and the property as I do at work. Because I do take pride in my home and my re- my my neighborhood. And I think that there's a few people up here on the board had, that have seen me out on a daily basis. Watering, mowing, trimming, cleaning, painting, cleaning up, even power washing the street, picking up the gravel off the da- darn road. The city property that I shouldn't have to, but I'm doing it to try to make it safe for the other neighbors in the in the area and the kids. You know, it's not right to do this to our neighborhood and our community, the way it's being done.
Thank you for your comments. Um Amy, could you address the issue with the notifications?
Uh so notices mailed out to any properties within two hundred feet of the subject property.
Right, it's done by the city, it's not done by the property.
Yes, it's not done by the property owners, that notices then also published in the official city newspaper.
Which is the Miami County.
Which is the Miami, so that's why.
Okay.
Our backyard is backed up directly behind and to that house, so we were within that amount and neither of us got any notification.
You, a letter went out to your address.
I never received.
Okay, well, it it was mailed, because I have you on my list.
At four oh one, you're not. Yeah, I, you're, sorry, and you're welcome, I just pulled up on the map, so you guys are welcome to come up and look at the buffer area, but.
Right.
Yeah.
I I didn't mean to interrupt the public hearing, but there's, that's been brought up twice, so I thought it would need to be addressed. Any other public comment?
My name is Ashton Schultz, I live at two zero eight West South Street, so my backyard is directly um. Butting up to this property, um my house was broken into last year November. Um prior to that, I've always felt safe in our neighborhood, listening to. The amount of foot traffic that this could bring in with staffing, with families, um with these people being mobile. It makes me feel very unsafe, I am in my twenties, I own that home on my own, um I've had no help, I've built. Everything around my life in that home, it is very frustrating to hear that this would go in. And no one have the audacity to come ask us, um as brought up, it is a very. Untruthful way of bringing this up, to make it a renting home, to then decide, oh, we'll find another way to make money out of this. I don't like it, it's very suspicious to me, um I see lots of children playing in that area, I am a teacher. I teach kindergarten, I have a special ed degree. I love the kids being in the neighborhood and I feel like this is going to prevent so many families. From wanting their kids out and about, whether it's ambulances coming in, whether it's family, we all run late, staff runs late. Somebody speeding up that road, um living on South Street itself is already, I mean, it's supposed to be what, thirty five through there? Twenty five, whatever it is, I can tell you seventy five percent of the cars that go by my house are not going that speed. So adding more traffic in there is making it even more unsafe for our children in that neighborhood, for me myself, I walk. For me, myself, I walk, I run these streets. Um we don't have sidewalks. So having more and more traffic in there just makes me feel unsafe and the parking thing, you can't tell me that on a given day, they're not gonna have more than four spots filled and that's gonna put cars in the road. But ultimately, my biggest issue is my property value. As mentioned by many other people, we've worked our butts off. I make sure that I'm taking care of everything I'm supposed to. And so do all of these people and it's just not fair to us that this is going in or attempting to be put in and those things not be considered because I know personally, I'm outside almost every day when it's warm. And I don't love the idea that there would be all of these random people just hanging out, walking around, being able to be mobile. And do whatever when we don't have that as it is right now. So I just think the safety of our kids and the people in that community, my safety, really needs to be taken into consideration with this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandy Thomas, five oh five South Jefferson. So I live directly across the street. Um I will say when Mrs. Mitchell lived there, I know this isn't about her, but when she lived there, she didn't even have much traffic. But she would have events and I think, I don't know what she had, but people coming over, I think every Thursday afternoon. And even with just the traffic she had, one of my cars got hit coming out of that driveway. Thankfully, that that person stopped, we got our interns, got it taken care of. But that's just one incident and it wasn't an assisted living house. Um I have kids that are constantly outside. And having to again explain to them why ambulances are coming up and down our street, why strangers are on our street. We're a very tight neighborhood. We all know each other. We all know who belongs where. Now we're gonna have strangers, you know. Our kids aren't gonna be freely able to just run around, because we don't know who's living in that house. We don't know the staff that's living there. I mean, I'm even concerned for the residents living there, you know, I mean. It's just, I I I I think this is a terrible idea. I've also put thousands and thousands of dollars in my house. Bringing up the value, this is gonna make our value go down, our house value go down. Um and why do we need another assisted living in Spring Hill? There's already at least two that I know of. And I doubt that they're full, I didn't check, but I I don't know that they're even completely full. I do know there's nursing staff uh shortages, so how how is this gonna be staffed twenty-four seven? I just hope you take all of all of our uh um into consideration, because this neighborhood is not okay with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie Samuels, here with my husband Nolan Samuels. We live at four one two South Jefferson, um just to the north of the house. We're just here to agree with everything everybody else has said, um just opposed to it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I just won't get up. Surrounding everybody else, four oh nine South Madison, I'm just east of them. Backed up against that lady that just got up. I'm worried about narrow streets in addition to the lesser cost of my property when I sell it and some of these other things. And yeah, I lived there quite a few years, me and my wife having them. A lot of kids running up and down there, especially when school's coming and going and I just want to say I agree with what you've heard from the last half dozen.
Thank you.
My name is Logan. I live at uh four ten, which is two houses to the north there. And I have a toddler myself who's growing up. And I don't need any of those emergency vehicle noises going off or anything like that. I just kinda wanna agree with everything out there, everything else that everybody has said so far, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Madeline Robinson. I too live at five oh one South Jefferson Street. My biggest concern is the traffic and the children. I work ninety-eight percent remote. And I constantly am open to the traffic coming up and down our road. It has gotten worse over the last two years, including construction coming through. It's actually a cement truck went flying by today, woke up my dog and I, because it went by so loud and so fast. And when you add the emergency vehicles as well as assisted living vans, it's just gonna make it louder. A lot of us have dogs. That makes us have barking dogs. Mine's a hundred and four pounds. It's not quiet. Wakes me up, then I'm cranky, then my husband has to deal with it. So I don't like the noise. I don't like the traffic. We are in the process of starting our own family and the idea of my kids running across the street trying to play with our neighbor's kids and getting hit. As I have, I have almost hit a person, because we were, they were doing pipeline work. And a big truck was parked half in the ditch, half in the road. I went around and a person walked in front of me. And that terrifies me that I would accidentally hit a child in my Chevy 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 auto. So I do not want additional vans going down. The school buses don't go down our road very often and except to pick up a couple of kids every once in a while. And I don't want the traffic. It terrifies me that we have children out and about all the time. And I don't want my children to get hurt or their children to get hurt. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll close the public comments portion of this. And now the commissioners can ask for any further clarification from applicant or staff.
I do.
Okay, um so I appreciate all of you guys coming um tonight and sharing your concerns because um I too am a homeowner homeowner and was concerned when stuff went in across the street from me. And so I appreciate you guys coming and um it's making me think, I guess, a little bit more about this. Um if I can ask, what is, what are the requirements for uh the individuals that will live here? Are, is there any kind of background checks? Could there be sex offenders? I mean, I hear, I'm hearing concern from citizens that there may be people there who could harm their children. Can we clarify whether or not sex offenders are allowed to live there?
No, so we are going to have like background check for the staff and also the residents.
Okay, so so staff are required to do background checks as well as the residents, okay. And I did look up, it looks like the average length of stay for residents in assisted living homes is twenty-two to twenty-eight months. So hopefully, they won't be strangers. Hope, maybe you guys will do some sort of community events for these people to get to know their neighbors. I I can see it as a positive. I can also see where the concern can come from if there's, if you have young children. Emergency vehicle um traffic. I did look it up and it looks like there's forty-two thousand calls um last year in the country. At assisted living facilities. I guess I don't know how many living assisted facilities there are in the country. But um do you know what's the average number of emergency calls to? Is it daily? Is it weekly? Is it monthly?
So when when we, I don't know the the accurate statistics of that, but you know, when I work in nursing homes. It may happen like once a week or once a month.
Okay.
Um but also, um I wonder, you know, without hearing all the concerns from the residents, I wonder if we can ask um the emergency vehicle to turn off the lights and sound when they enter the road. That was one of my thoughts.
Okay.
Okay, so that's a no or or something you'll ask?
Yes.
Okay, and then you said we're um staff are required to go through background checks.
And the residents.
Okay, and then um somebody had um brought up the fact that there's a nursing shortage. Is there a requirement to be a nurse to be there or how would you handle that situation if you know, the the two o'clock in the morning person calls and says, I'm sick, I have to leave?
You mean the resident? We do, we do, oh for.
No, a staff person.
So for staff, so me and Elia will be both are nurses too. And then our administrator, she's also a nurse. So uh we are all are going to be having um, you know, uh go through like all the licensing and registration processes through Kansas. So if there is like an emergency person who has to leave, like one of us can cover.
Okay.
Like we all are uh nurses too.
Okay. Okay, I think that's that's all I have for for right now. Um it, one more question though, um Troy, if you happen to know, you said you've um had somebody who lived in one in Ottawa. Do you know about the properties around that area? Would, did they take care of the property? Was there a concern of property values going down?
So the ones that my grandparents lived at, um it was a double wide trailer.
They lived in a double wide trailer in Ottawa?
That was, that was assisted living.
Okay.
Facility was a double wide trailer.
Okay.
That they lived in, um they both passed away at that facility. Um they uh, it was a very nice facility. And we we went down there, they lived there probably for two to three years. And um so we got to know the staff very well and um it was much better than being in a nursing.
Yeah.
And so I I was very appreciative of the facility. I don't believe it's there any longer.
Okay.
This has been probably twenty years ago, maybe twenty-five years ago that this was, that this was going on. So very early at the um assisted living facilities in residential areas, I believe. Um but my mom was a nurse and she was the one that found it.
Okay.
And so. Anyway, to to answer your question.
Well, I did um just re- research also and it appears that they have to have at least two um needs for assistance, whether it be bathing or cooking or things like that. So these are not people who are gonna be necessarily able to go out and I mean, they're not gonna wanna loiter the neighborhood so much.
So um according to Kansas Department of Aging and Disability. Homeless is defined as um people who really need minimum assistance. So they do not like exactly say what are the minimum um require, mini- uh minimum disabilities or minimum requirements are. Um so homeless is going to be a place where people want to do like independent living. Um and also maybe need some help with cooking. You know, they cannot make their own healthy meal. Or um who may need some reminder to take their medications. Or who may need some assistance making their bedding or taking a bath. So this is going to be like a very minimal residence, a very minimal um uh people who need very minimal assistance. Um but you know, they don't really define like exactly what their um
Okay.
requirements are, yeah.
Thank you.
So two questions.
Yes.
So the onsite staff would typically be the administrator during the day and then a nurse, a single nurse twenty-four seven?
Yes.
Are there any additional staff?
So uh the um CNA should be able to make the food uh for the residents in the morning and in the afternoon. So that is not, we are not planning to have like additional staff for um for the residents. And then the administrator is not going to be there every single day, but they are going to be available all the time. But they would come and um do their visits in the morning.
So on average, you'd probably have maybe two?
Two cars. Two, two, two staff members.
And then i- if you're willing, you don't have to, but or if you're willing, maybe you could address the concern that was shared about the 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 sense that this wasn't the original intent for this property.
So initiate, yeah, we did buy that uh, so we were like looking for properties like that uh which has like single level, like you know, where all the residents don't have to use any staircase and stuff. So when we, when this property came in, so we just bought it with the intention for residential, for homeless. Um and then uh we were planning to start it like in early fall. Um and then, you know, we were going through all the inspection process and um and then we came across that uh this one has to be approved by city. Uh even though it is not considered like according to, like when I discussed with my friends and many people who runs Homeless. Um it was never a concern that or that it is going to be a multi-family residential home. So when this uh concern pop up, um then we had to wait for like few more extra months than what we have planned. Um so and we didn't know like how long it's going to take. You know, we thought it may take like six months or one year. Um and then in the meantime, we have to pay the mortgage also. So we thought in the meanwhile, um until we get things figured out, we will rent it for now. And then once we get approval and get everything figured out, like then we can go ahead and start our residential home.
Gotcha, thank you. This is more of a clarification, housekeeping item, but it was mentioned a couple of times out there that this is a rezoning and Amy and Spencer, this is not a rezoning, right?
No, so this is a conditional use permit, which is analyzed typically under the same golden factor. So it looks like a rezoning and you're giving it that same type of consideration. But this will continue to be an R one zone parcel.
And then how does that review process work with the CUP?
It's yearly inspection? So it'll be checked on by staff once a year?
Yeah.
It's an annual review.
It's an annual review. And then we'll report back to you guys with with the findings, if any. But they'll look at landscape, I mean, just.
So the property is not gonna be rezoned, it's gonna be rank, remain residential, have an annual review by staff?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and it's an R one, so I mean, they have every right to rent the house right now. Um and it depends on any homeowners association, which probably doesn't, doesn't have that, because there isn't, right? No, so you could rent the house as is right now. You could have rowdy teenagers there too. Would it be an Airbnb? I'm just pointing out a fact. It, well, no, you could rent it to, you can rent it to as many residents as you want.
But you know, I I mean, as, so I have kids too and so we, it's not, you know, we always do background checks before we even rent it to anybody. Even if it is going to be a single family resident.
Yeah. No, I'm just pointing out, you could rent it right now. You could have many people there, old and young. Uh typically, senior citizens aren't gonna be driving hectic down the road, like some residents. Excuse me, the public hearing is closed. I'm talking.
The public hearing is still open, but the public comments.
Well, they, they need to be quiet while.
I agree. So would you please be respectful?
Yeah.
No, it's no raising hands.
You can rent.
There's no, you had your time for a comment, so we're.
So I'm trying to point out the alternative that could be worse. You could rent this house, you could have a lot of people in there. I've seen it done in Spring Hill. I have a house that I rent to a nice family. So it's not that bad to have, you know, elderly elderly and they're taking care of them here. You know, I mean, the only downside, I think, is there gonna be a little bit more traffic. There might be emergency vehicles, like she said, maybe once a week or a month. That could be loud, right? But then you're not gonna have teenagers tearing down the road. I can tell you that right now. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and close. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing and now be the time to, for deliberation. I think it's, I think it's helpful that the city has a conditional use permit process for this type of use in R one. And I'm surprised to hear other cities don't have that. So I think it it does give the community some leverage to make sure that this property is maintained. And that it's not creating a nuisance. Um you know, and 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 some issues which, you know, could be detrimental to their property value. And and as you said, Stephen, you know, there there are probably more intensive uses. I did mention that, you know, I've I've had had some exposure to different residential care facilities. Um and those can include elder care, so like this Home Plus. They can include transitional living facilities for people who are dismissed from uh prison. It is like a halfway house and and those are everywhere. You don't typically know that they're there. Um I would say they have more traffic than um my my mother-in-law lives a few doors down from one. And you really wouldn't know what it is unless someone told you. But you know, sometimes there can be more traffic. I think I mentioned that my wife owned a residential uh eating disorder facility uh in Leewood that was in a home. And you know, none of the neighbors actually kinda got to know the residents and they were part of the of the neighborhood. And it didn't seem to create any ill effect um on that community, which which was, which was good. And it was actually helpful to the residents. But but I can also sympathize with the argument that, you know, our homes are our biggest investment. And you know, we didn't buy a home across from multifamily, probably, you know, for a reason. I don't know if you consider this multifamily. But you know, you 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 want your, the character of your neighborhood to stay the same. I think in this case, it it will be pretty low impact. Um it just, just sort of a point of order for the community, for everyone who spoke, and we appreciate your comments. Just so you guys know, because I um I know that you probably just heard about it and things like that and you're you're alarmed. The planning commission, you know, we're just citizens, we're just an advisory body. It's the city council that will that will um do the final approval. And so we just make a recommendation to the city council. So you will have an opportunity to organize your thoughts further and 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 maybe get more people if you want for this, when the city council considers this, whichever way we vote. Um and it's, and they're they're the 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 legal authority. Um just just to kinda tell you how the process works. Um, just, just to kind of tell you how the process works, we're just an advisory body. I think that, I think those are the, my, the bulk of my comments.
Just, just to clarify. You're not just an advisory body, you're the fact finding body, so you conduct the public hearing, you take the facts from the staff report from the applicant. From the community, anyone who's here to speak, and you bring those facts to the planning or to the city council, because they're not going to hold a public hearing and get the facts. Necessarily themselves, they don't redo the public hearing, so. Yes, you make a recommendation that they can follow or not follow, but uh, yeah, there's more of a formal fact.
To be clear, the public can still show up at the.
Right, so.
City council and mayor, and you can speak on your, you know, your.
Yeah, there will be a public participation at the beginning of every city council member meeting, like usual, you all are welcome to go to that. Amy, do you know when this one will get?
January twenty-third.
January twenty-third.
Yep.
I didn't mean to diminish our role.
Yeah.
Sorry, so.
We're all very important people still.
I, I did have a question about where it said the sign was, it shows the sign in the backyard, because that didn't seem prob- probably correct. On the one.
I think it's just.
Okay. Yes, where, where it shows that in the backyard, it says sign here or whatever it was, so. Okay. That's okay, I, I would just like, that's a weird place for a sign in the backyard, so. Okay, thank you, I appreciate your clarification for that.
So I forgot about that, yeah, that there was a sign, so where is it, it's in the backyard?
It was supposed to be site, not sign.
Okay, no sign, okay, because that's what I wondered too, I was like, I don't know another sign, um, because we just went through this with a different property, but, okay, so it's not a sign. There's nothing, no signage going to be there that shows it's an assisted living facility. It's just going to look like any other ordinary home.
Yep. That would be a question for the. Will there be any signs? It's okay, thank you.
And that's the same as, as, you know, other allowed uses for.
Right.
For group homes.
Sure.
I um. I just want to voice to you that I appreciate that people are here, and I know this is hard, um, a very hard decision because we have probably all gone through it. Um, and so trying to alleviate some concerns about who um may be living there. And um especially, I think it's important to know that there will be background checks. Um, because I, I, I have checked that often to see where the sex offenders are in town, I mean, they are, you know. Um, allowed to, yeah, to live and, and, you know, should be um allowed, you know, to live in our town as well, but. Uh, obviously, con- concerned citizens need to know, um, you know, where they live as well, and so, um. But at least knowing that this is not a facility for them, uh, I think is important uh to know. And that all of the staff will have background checks, um, I know as well. A- as, as they've mentioned, concern of property values, uh, there's concern that my property value would go down with the. Um, addition of the, the community across the street from us where there were beautiful cows, and now there's about to be a pool. Um, and I, I had a lot of concern about it at the time, I don't have that so much. So I, I mean, that's a, a piece that I don't always feel is um as valid as, as we feel it is at the time. Um, as far as strangers, I think these are going to be elderly people, I think the only strangers that might be in town. Or might be running around, there might be a visiting relative who goes outside to smoke a cigarette or something, I don't know, but. I would imagine that their primary purpose would be there to visit a relative and not to meander. Uh, emergency vehicle traffic, I do think that's probably going to increase, but a good opportunity to, to speak to kids about, hey, you know what, we all get old. And um, and who's to say that any neighborhood, any house in that community isn't going to have an accident or. An emergency vehicle is going to come, we just don't know when emergencies are going to happen. Um, so I suppose that will go up, but, but even so, I think it's an opportunity to talk with kids about. Being older and how we take care of people, um, I, I'm going to be over sixty-five at some age and at some point, and hopefully, God willing. Um, I don't know, I, my kids say right now that they're taking care of me, um, we'll see what happens. They may give me the boot, and hopefully if they do, there's um a place for me to go that, that looks as nice as this looks, um. But also the average stay, you know, like the stay is about twenty-eight months, so I think there's a real opportunity for. The community to be able to connect with these um folks and make the end of their life or a little bit um more pleasant, and I think that. You know, I, I love kids, I mean, I work with kids, and so I think if I'm seventy-five years old and um. Need help cooking or whatever and happen to go outside and, and see a little kid playing in the street, probably make me happy, I'd probably offer him cookies or something, I don't know. So I hope that there's that um relationship that they're able to gain with the community. Um, so I'm, I'm going to be approving it, um, I'll just let you know, so. I know I'm usually saying no a lot, but um, I do think it's a good addition to the neighborhood.
As far as licensing, I can tell you, as experience, you have to go through a background check for the Kansas licensing anyway. For me, I have to do fingerprints along with the background check and do all of that, so it's not like you can just be. Anybody can have a license, so if that helps anybody. So, and it's, and it's something that I have to do yearly, I don't know about CNAs or RNs, but I believe it's probably yearly as well. So, that does kind of help, you know, with staffing issues. I've been, my mom's been in the nursing home business for like almost fifty years, let's be real. They drop them off at these houses and there's not going to be a lot of traffic visiting, that's just how it is. So, but I don't think, I, you're not going to have just wandering people up and down the street, so.
And I'll just piggyback off Mr. Morse's comments about the uh, just the fact that we do have this as a CUP and it's, I think, you know. As community members out there leverage that, that this is an annual review, if you see a shutter hanging off the, the side of the house or the lawns not being maintained. Make, make the city aware of it, it's going to be annual review, so use that to your leverage, I mean, other municipalities apparently don't have that anymore, but. It's can be a benefit to you all, so use it to your benefit, it will be reviewed, but I do think this is a good use for this area.
Any other deliberation comments?
I agree with the comments, all of you have made.
Alrighty. So, the public hearing is closed, the deliberation is complete, so we'll go through and. Some of us should make a motion, either to approve or disapprove, and then after that, then the fourteen day protest period will begin. And any protest petition must be filed in the cit- in the office of the Spring Hill City Clerk within fourteen days. From the conclusion of the public hearing held by the planning commission. Sample copies of the protest petitions may be obtained from the city clerk's office here at the city at um, this office, or here in this building. Uh, four oh one North Madison Street, Spring Hill, Kansas, so. After we vote, whatever way the vote is, you guys can file a protest, okay, so this is just the beginning of the process. Um, so I don't want you guys to be frustrated by it, um, believe me, we've been through this many times and we've seen many.
Go to city council.
Yes, you can go to city council meetings, and it will be on the, you said the twenty-third, okay, so that will be when that happens, so, anyway.
This is an example, but there was something that this body unanimously denied that was recently unanimously approved by the city council, so.
Yes. Yep.
They have their own mind.
They do.
Yeah, it's, it's the governing body, it's the city council and mayor that make the decisions, final decisions.
We're just pheons up here.
And we, no, we're, we're fact, we're fact finding.
We're fact finding. We're, we're fact finders, that's.
That's right.
So, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the application CU dash twenty-four dash two, the conditional use permit for. Hospital, nursing, homes and retirement housing for Spring Hill governing body, including any conditions presented by staff.
Second.
It's been moved in second, we'll start the voting at the left, on my left.
Aye.
Aye.
All abstain for the reason I stated earlier.
Aye.
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 So, motion carries six zero one. Like I said, the protest now, now you have fourteen days to file your protest, okay? Alright, thank you all for coming, appreciate, always enjoy seeing all the citizens joining in the process, neighbors. Alright, moving on, next item is discussion. Anybody have any discussion items? How about announcements?
Okay, on the, at the November fourteenth city council meeting, they did approve the final plat for Hidden Hills third. And there was no meeting held at the end of November. And that's my announcement.
November or December?
November.
Oh, because of Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm. I didn't tell you about December, did I?
No.
December, I don't think we had anything at the beginning, and there was no meeting at the end of December.
Okay.
Yeah, it didn't have anything planned.
Appropriation either payment.
Yeah.
What was uh, what's next month looking like, this agenda?
It's February.
Yeah.
Right now, um, I don't think I have anything, maybe one thing on the agenda. Possibly that site plan for Grease Community.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's a hairy area over there Sunday mornings.
Mm-hmm.
Can imagine, I think the, the traffic light will help that though, and if they close that left turn.
Yeah. Because then you got traffic lights on both sides of it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I've seen people try and turn the left at, you know, real early in the morning and the sun's not up.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, they are.
In Josh and my neighborhood, they, you know, where they're extending, they have the roads almost uh complete, it's kind of nice.
So another, another point of entrance?
Yep, off of Ridgeview and then Newcastle goes, it's that, I was telling my daughter, hey, you're going to have a shortcut someday.
For sure.
Well, it is really nice that you can go um, Matt or. What street is it?
Waswell?
No, Webster, and go all the way up to Hundred ninety-first street now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's a huge difference, I, that when we, when we go to the hardware store, that is the, I, that's the way I go.
Well, no one knows about it yet, so. It's a private street.
Looping around like, why am I looping around right?
Yeah.
Went straight through.
Yeah. Yeah, so it, it is nice, we're, we're making progress, so that, that's good.
I'd, I'd like to share my uh planning commission new year's resolution.
Sure.
And that is that we finish the comprehensive plan.
For what year?
I would, I would say by uh the end of May.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
I'll have to have a few Voodoo Rangers for that.
Need some more work sessions.
Any other comments, announcements? What? I have a motion to adjourn, I hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero zero.